Manager Agreement Renewal.
Okay, um, we've been discussing this, it was reviewed by the council and the town attorney and myself, and updated accordingly. It has not been, the agreement has not been updated since, since I started back in April of eighteen. Pretty minor changes, um, we've, I think, we've all reviewed it, so I was looking to get a final approval and signature by the mayor for this evening.
Council has looked this over? Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
So here a motion to approve the town manager agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the town manager agreement. All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
So carry.
I'll get you to sign after Neil. Thank you.
Circuit Rider Memorandum of Agreement and Assurance is agreement.
Okay, um, so this is for the New Windsor's renewal of the Circuit Rider contract between the town and Maryland Rural Development Corporation, or MRDC, for Circuit Rider services for the program year of two thousand and twenty-three, beginning July first of this year, and ending June thirtieth of next year, two thousand and twenty-three. The annual fee remains unchanged at twelve hundred and fifty dollars, that's yearly. Uh, so I need a motion and a vote to continue with the Circuit Rider program and New Windsor's continued participation in the FY twenty-three program.
Gary, just for those that aren't familiar with the Circuit Rider, could you explain a little bit?
Yeah, um, Mike Reynolds is our Circuit Rider, and he, like I said, he is basically a state employee, paid primarily by the state. He splits time between Austin, New Windsor, and Union Bridge. He's one week here, one week there. Um, he does primarily, his main focus is grants and managing, applying for grants, researching for grants, and then main, when we get the grants, there's typically a lot of paperwork involved with those grants and timesheets and things like that. So he coordinates and documents a lot of that, and basically does all kinds of other things while he's here. Um, you know, he'll answer phones, he'll, he'll attend meetings with myself and certain things, um, you know, pretty much anything we need. Um, primarily, it's, it's the grants portion is, is what they was, it was originally started, started for. But it's a very beneficial program, and I'm sure to, to Union Bridge, I know it is for, for New Windsor, uh, for what we pay and the services that we get for it is, is, it's substantial. It's, it's basically having a free employee for the most part, so.
And just a little history, uh, former town manager Frank Schaefer and I went to a meeting that the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development had. They had notified us that they had money for Circuit Riders, and we thought we would go down and really come back with a full-time Circuit Rider. And then we found out that this gentleman was there from the Maryland Rural Development Corporation, it's a, I think, a five oh one C three. He has Circuit Riders throughout the state. I think he has one that does all eight municipalities up in Garrett County, one down on the eastern shore. And while, while Frank and I were there, we thought, why should we do all the paperwork, the workers' comp, you know, all the taxes and everything? And at that time, it was like six hundred and fifty bucks a year, which still twelve hundred and fifty dollars is a great deal. But we just wanted to talk to him, and the state agreed to it, and they said, we really couldn't have a full-time person. But we shared with, um, Union Bridge, and then Sykesville also has a full-time Circuit Rider through the same organization. So, um, basically, you're getting a part-time employee for, or the town's getting a part-time employee for twelve hundred and fifty dollars, and we don't have to do the taxes, the workers' comp or anything, all that is covered. So, like Gary said, it is a great deal to the town.
He's gotten us thousands of dollars of, of grants, so.
He handles, for example, all the project open space applications. He did the, the grant for the College Blue Ridge Road Project. Um, you know, he's, he's, he's always, if there's anything you want to research and look for, just let him know, and he can, he can start that, that cer- research process. He did the, he worked on the applications, the MDE application for the water line, he was working on the one for USDA. Of course, that's changed a little. I told him to hold off on the USDA for now, since the governor's money's come through. So, um, you know, you name it, he, he's, he's very capable and skilled at, at finding things. He has good contacts at the state level. Um, and if he, if he doesn't know the answer, he'll, he'll pursue it and, and get ahold of someone who does. So he's, he's very thorough as well.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I believe this is some of the best money that we spent, personally working with Mike, quite a bit on some of these, and, um, not only writing the grants and looking for the grants, but managing the projects. Once we get the money, um, he, he is a very valued employee for us, and I'm, I'm proud to make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Circuit Rider Memorandum of Agreement and Assurance. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry.
Some more signatures for you, Mayor?
Got it. I got a pen. I brought my own. Town Hall Audio-
Show and tell about that later.
Town Hall Audio Visual Upgrade Project. Councilman Hall, you want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, so, um, right now, I got up there, um, I put a spreadsheet together. Basically, it's taking Tomlin Tech's quote, and also, um, the CMC spreadsheet provided, and put it together into one spreadsheet so that we can see the total, um, what this project would cost us as a town, um, which, let me go up to the top. Right now, it's, it's about nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, so that includes all the microphones, all of the three cameras, the, um, cabling for all of the microphones, as well as for our computers, um, so we don't have to worry about streaming issues. All of the, the technology in the back that makes the streaming work. Um, CMC also provides live streaming on CMC, uh, Facebook, YouTube, and of course, we have the Zoom. Um, but so, all of the technology listed on the top spreadsheet is what CMC provided, is the equipment that they are aware of, they can support. So, when we do get it installed, they will actually be able to help, um, obviously, run the technology through their computer, but also help if we have any issues. Um, the second spreadsheet at the bottom is completely from Tomlin Tech. I have it broken down as well from material and install. So there'll be, um, basically, the, the material, the actual cabling, um, and then the costs associated with installing that is all broken down. So I guess, does anybody have any questions?
What's the timeframe for them to begin? If this is approved, in time, that'll be completed.
So, um, that all goes back to how quick they can get the, they can actually purchase and acquire the, the supplies, um, because we are worried about the supply chain issues. Um, once things come in, I think Tomlin Tech quoted, I think it was within four weeks, they would be able to come out and actually install the cabling. But obviously, they will wait till they, all the equipment comes in as well.
But all materials will be locked in at the price, even if they can't get the equipment?
So that, that's, that's, uh, what I actually had, had to ask CMC. So, um, today, you confirm that the, it was the pricing that we have today, but we have to, I guess, re-quote it?
Um, yes, so, um, the concern is that the quote may be more than thirty days old at this point. Uh, I know that the quote was good for thirty days, and yeah, this is a separate manufacturer supplier. We just sent them a request, and they gave us a quotation, and that was what the pricing there for the equipment is. So, um, to get, uh, I know already that there was one item on that list, the, the data switch, which we've been told is six months to get delivered. So, once we have a green light, we can then go back in and find appropriate replacements, swap out items, and find what's available. Uh, and I, I believe that we'd be able to find something at a similar price on, on the items that CMC would supply. You just have to work, we, we will supply that item regardless of the price, so despite we're committed to that. So, the other items are ones that are relatively stable and should be available. Last time I checked, they were reasonably available, so that that wouldn't cause a delay. And that those prices should be relatively stable as well. It's where items are not available, that the price, the demand, you know, the demand goes up, price potentially can go up.
So that, that would be the twenty-four port managed gigabit switch?
That's correct.
Okay. So that, 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 at least that line item is six hundred and fifty-five dollars. That could change. I guess, so, if we would proceed with this, though, you would need, I guess, obviously, to go ahead to do that. But then, is this one vendor that purchases all of this, or is it multiple vendors?
Um, we typically, when we go out, we get pricing from three vendors.
Okay.
Uh, just to make sure, we, we like to keep it honest. Um, uh, there, and then based upon that, we will, usually, we try to do it as a package, uh, rather than individual items. Uh, it depends upon the size of the bid. Uh, when it's this size, sometimes we, we'll break it up. Uh, you know, in the ten, ten thousand range, anything under twenty-five thousand, we have a tendency sometimes to pick and match.
Cause, cause one of the noted, notes that I noticed that was in the spreadsheet said, um, all prices are MSRP, um, from web-coded prices, actual prices are likely to be discounted. So does that, does that mean that the price that we see here might be discounted even more?
That's correct.
So, my thought is, if, even if inflation did hit some of these prices and brought the price up, the discount might even it out.
That's correct.
So, whereas, whereas here, something might have been six hundred dollars, if we were gonna get it for four hundred dollars, even if inflation hit it, it would still be below the, the three hun- the six hundred dollars we have here. Um, so I, I feel this would be a top-end number. And I guess if we would proceed with it, we would have to, um, I guess we would proceed with funding up into that amount, and then-
That's what I was gonna suggest, is if we approve this and-
Not to exceed.
If we get to a point where something is inflated, uh, more than we expect, and we're above that, then I would suggest we come back and get approval to do that additional above, above me. I think it's important with, with this lag time, early time with, with materials, it's, it's important to get it, to get it going as soon as possible, better, I believe, so.
And, and, um, and the other thing, Tomlin Tech, they, they've been very good working with us. They, uh, as long as we agree within thirty days, they will honor that. Um, so even if the, the deal takes a little bit longer. Um, the, um, the nineteen thousand that would be town-funded, um, could also be taken out of our money. So, that could be our funding source as well.
So we talked about last, the last meeting. We have that first transe and that money available, even, even with the planned usage of that, with the, uh, Blue Ridge Pump Station upgrade, we have sufficient, more than sufficient funds to, to cover this.
Yeah, and, and it is, it's a huge, it's a huge lift for CMC as well. Um, I do wanna give them credit, because, um, just, for example, one of the CMC-funded portion was equivalent of fourteen thousand dollars, that they're going to, um, bring equipment in here, um, on a base, basically a permanent lease for us, zero cost, which is excellent. And, and just alone, the actual amount of, um, support that we get. So basically, when we come in, all I have to do is present a spreadsheet. They handle the TV, they handle the streaming, they, they do everything. So it's, it's a big le- a burden off of us, yeah.
I would just add also that, uh, based upon the last meeting, uh, we know that the availability of some of the items in our list was fluctuating. So we went in and purchased the cameras, for example, uh, just to be, just to be sure, and to get the, get the price. We didn't want to see the price go up. Um, cause one of the items was also fluctuating, so.
I do have a question. Um, if we're able to get our hands on the, of the equipment, what is the lead time for act- actual fabrication? Or not fabrication, but installation? Is that noted?
Installation, that's in the Tomlin Tech quote.
Okay.
Believe it said four to six weeks, um, after everything comes in. Cause they also have things they're purchasing, like the, the rack in the back. Um, they have a few bits of equipment in there.
Probably by the end of the summer, it sounds like, maybe.
I, I would, I would expect there's gonna at least be two months of, of waiting for supplies to get in.
To be further, just, just to be a little more clear about my que- if, once we actually have everything they're waiting for as well, actual labor and time to do the work, are we gonna interrupt? Will we, will it go through a couple of meetings, or will we, is, are we talking like three, three days?
So actually, like, installing of those things?
Yeah, yeah.
They, they have it quoted, I think, for two days.
Okay.
Um, and they would, they also said, once, once we do approve, if we did approve, um, they would also work with CMC pretty closely to make sure their equipment comes in at the same time, that they, and then they would also talk to the town staff, make sure that they're not bothering anything.
Yeah.
Obviously, they're not gonna be, you know, tearing up walls while we're having a meeting or anything like that, so.
So it sounds like that we could schedule it in between a council and a work session, or?
It'd be nice to schedule it right after one of them's, I mean, right after the work session or something, so that we could, some of us could come in and play with it, so that we're not like trying it out at an actual meeting.
I'm all for that.
Cause we have enough, we've had enough technical stuff for the past year.
Yeah, and, and, and another benefit too, I mean, I guess people from home don't really see that we got wa- cables strung all over the town hall. I mean, it even goes back to the back office. Uh, it, it'll be nice, all these will be straight to the wall, um, everything's nice and clean, so. And there'll also be a microphone for, um, for the audience to, to make, you know, announcements.
Is it appropriate to make a motion to accept this proposal and give, uh, the vendors the, the green light on this?
That would be the next step, if there's no question.
I'll make that motion, that we, we accept the proposals as written, and that we proceed with this endeavor for the audio system.
I'm gonna second that motion, and I want to, um, thank Will for all the hard work that you did putting this together, and, and all the go-backs and when, when our questions came up. Uh, Kevin, the same thing, appreciate you working with Will on that. And Richard from CMC, really appreciate you guys stepping up and doing so much for the town, so, thank you.
I second that. You all, you all have been a great team, and this is gonna be great, you know.
All right, we have a motion to spend up to, not to exceed?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents for the Town Hall Audio Visual Upgrade Project. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you, Richard.
My pleasure.
Recognition and thank you to Eclectic Motor Company, New Windsor.
I just, uh, did a quick note that, um, I had it as improperly as the Electric Motor Company. I was correct, the Eclectic Motor Company. Um, it's like, uh, misspelled there. Um, no, they're, they're a new business, uh, in New Windsor, located in what used to be the New Windsor Automotive Building down here at the end of church on the left-hand side before the railroad tracks there. And they graciously donated five hundred dollars to the town for Town Beautification Day on April thirtieth. So, we wanted to make a, a, a recognition of that, uh, at, at a public meeting, and we're also going to get a, a sign, uh, like the, just a temporary sign.
Temporary sign, yeah.
Like we do for Music on the Main, and put it up at the, at the, I call it gazebo park, the other Main Street Park, and maybe one down here, uh, next, next door here, just to, to have a, a, a sign recognition for, for their service. And they're also, um, we're trying to schedule a meeting with them, and I think I forwarded it to you, um, you know.
Wayne was gonna be looping you in, so.
They're, they're looking to, um, uh, refurbish the cannons here at Veterans Park, uh, pro bono. We pay for the paint, they do the work. So, I think Wayne-
They wanna do it, or pay for it?
No, they wanna do it.
Because we had a company out on Spring, or, uh, Sam's Creek.
Yeah, and they, we paid, mm, I think Wayne said it was eleven thousand dollars? Does that sound about right?
Mm, can't remember that now.
Yeah, so, so the company that actually restored the cannons, Brad, the owner of Eclectic, used to work for them.
Okay.
Oh, great.
He's very familiar with the restoration process.
He, uh, Brad's also closely worked with, uh, the Gettysburg Museum to restore a lot of those cannons as well. So the only thing that they're asking for is that we pay for the, the paint supplies to be able to do the project. Um, and then potentially, if the wheels are, um, in, in too bad a shape to repair, um, we would have to get the wheels, um, constructed, um, and they have an idea where we could do that as well.
That they don't make them active? Cause we had, we, we had that option, we did have that option to make them active. And, and if I, if my history is correct, and Kim, you can correct me on this, but I think they are Japanese cannons that, when they were captured, they were brought over here, and they were poor, part of the war bond efforts. So, that's a little history. Plus, they were also taken down to Berlin for Runaway Bride. So, they are in the movie as well, so, just a little history on that.
We should probably get something that says all that on it though, cause I recall all of that as well, but, yeah.
I could, I, I stand corrected if someone has something better.
That sounds, that sounds right.
Yeah.
We definitely don't want them working.
No, no, but that was an option. Uh, town manager, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, for the June first council meeting, uh, Lehigh and Aggregate Group are going to attend and give a presentation on a project that's going on in Union Bridge. It's not really affecting here, other than just they wanna let, uh, the council and the town know what, what the project is, and just stay in touch and communicate. So, there's gonna, we'll put them, you know, up in the agenda early on, and they'll, they'll have some folks here from, from Lehigh in this, uh, Aggregate Group, and they'll, they'll give a presentation on, on the project at the, at the council meeting. Um, the other thing I have here is, um, we drafted up some verbiage, um, for the Lehigh, uh, plaque at Fountain Park. So, um, you have that here, and we're in, on, on your, um, on your folders, in your folders, I think, um, on your, for tonight's, uh, meeting. I can, I can make some copies if you, if you would.
Will's gonna, Will's gonna pull it up so we can look at it.
So, it's just a, it's just a rough draft. Um, Neil already per- um, pointed out it might be Lehigh Cement, so I can clarify that. But, uh, we're talking about, it, we went up, Mike and, and Wayne and I went up to the park and looking at where we wanna put the sign. And in the front, where the lettering is and everything, the higher port, higher section of the wall, there's really no room with where the lettering is, and we don't wanna go too low because there's shrubs there and they're gonna grow up. So what we're thinking about doing is, uh, on the sitting wall portion, out front vertically, putting a, a section as high up as we can, putting up, basically, an eight, we're thinking an eight and a half by eleven size plaque, and probably doing two if we can, one on each of the sitting walls on each side, or underneath where you sit. But it'll be facing, it'll be out facing the road. So one of the options was to put it where you sit, but no one's gonna see that unless you walk by or you're sitting there. So, at least this way, it'll be, be more visible. Um, if there's any other suggestions, um, for location, but I think it should go, their, their contribution was towards, was the wall and the lettering, so I think it should be, should be there. We thought about trying to put it up on top of the wall, but I don't, I don't like that idea for a couple of reasons. I don't think it would look great, for one, and it could get vandalized easier, easier, I think, or knocked down. So, um, but any suggestions, um, on the, on the verbiage, just like I said, just like in our first draft? I'm gonna check on with Lehigh on, on their, uh-
Preference.
Preference of, to what they want to, want the plaque to say.
Very good.
Any, any, all right, okay.
I'm gonna have to think about it a little bit.
Okay, yeah, if you have anything, just, just shoot it to me.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe rather, my first impression is park sign instead of park signage.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
I'm gonna think about it.
Okay, let me know. Um-
I think, and I think Dave already suggested this. I don't remember if we just, he and I talked about it, if we all talked about it, but I know, I know you already sent the, the, the Lehigh a letter, and I sent Kent an email thanking him, but it would be nice, once this is in, wherever we decide to install, i- if we could maybe take a picture with the council and the mayor in front of it too. You know, maybe use it in the newsletter, and put it on Facebook, and send it to them, and you know, that kind of thing.
Good idea.
Kind of a big deal about it, because it was a big deal. What was it, twenty-three thousand dollars or something?
Twenty-five thousand, it was, I think.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Ribbon cutting.
Yeah, there you go, a little ribbon cutting. Maybe we could do that at Music on the Main or something.
If it works.
I like that, yeah, great idea.
Total point of that, of Music on the Main?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay, good idea.
I might, since I write for a living, I might manipulate this.
Well, right away, and some of them, you won't find it.
Of course, I'll leave it in the drive so everybody can see.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, then moving on, if we're done that, um, the Town Fire Hall System Upgrade. We, Spiker Security, I got put in contact with them, uh, through Steve Farkas, and when they installed the interior and exterior cameras, um, as a support option, uh, kinda to, well, to replace Westminster Securities, who did the initial install there. Uh, Steve felt that these guys would do a better service for us in terms of, uh, troubleshooting with these cameras and, and providing service, and, uh, we had, we had Mike Bowers with, uh, with Spikers come out recently, and he was checking on a camera problem, and as a courtesy, he went through the whole building and checked out our, we kinda described what we had going on here, uh, how, how the building was set up when, when we bought it, and, and the, the fire system and security system, um, that. And he, he basically was looking at things and checked the panel board back here in, in the utility room, and, um, suggests this, that system is, is at least, I would say, at least fifteen years old, the system that, that we have in here. So he was, um, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a bit dated, and we've had some issues, likely because it's, um, a combined security and fire system. And that's how it was installed back when it was L one, I believe, or maybe even before that. But, um, we had some issues with it, um, things, uh, at the entry points triggering, uh, the smoke detectors and, and the, the alarm systems, basically, wasn't sending anything out, but it was, it was, we were getting beeping signals, and Wayne was having to come in here and shut things down, and it's because it's all kinda tied together. Um, Mike is saying that the security systems these days are, are, are separate. Security and fire are separate systems. So Mike provided a, a, a quote, um, to upgrade the fire system. Um, and it, it said, the cost is, um, eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. And the quote, um, I have it again in your folders, but the quote, uh, includes a new panel in the back here, full, complete new panel, new, new smoke detectors, sounders, uh, strobes in the bathroom. Um, they, they host the alarm system on, at their office, so that when they're, what, the smoke detectors would go off, their system is recording it, and then they place the call to the, uh, to the fire department. Um, and all the wiring and installation, um, Spikers will also prepare a plan and submit an application to Carroll County, uh, for approval of the system upgrade. It has to run through County Fire, um, and the Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal will do the inspection. I put Mike in contact with, uh, a guy I know, Brian Van Falsen, who knows the process, and he's the one that will approve the plan and the application, and then the Fire Marshal would ultimately come in and do the inspections. And Mike's very familiar with, um, with, uh, the process of, of doing that, so he knows the plan is, and the application is needed. So he's, that's all, that's including everything i- i- in the quote. So everything in the quote is included in that. So, um, I think that's something that we should go ahead and do, um, get a, get an updated, uh, system here for that. So I can, just two quick things. Spikers can also upgrade, uh, the keyless entry system to Town Hall, uh, if we need them to, and, um, that might be something we wanna get a quote on as well. That's gonna be a lot less expensive. Um, it can be recorded onto, uh, the program that they, they could put in, could be put on my laptop and Wayne's- could be put on my laptop and Wayne's laptop to record, uh, who's coming in and, and when, based on the key, the key code, uh, that's of your fob or whatever. So, we can, we can pursue that, um, i- if you'd like. I think it's probably a good idea. And then lastly, they also do security systems in terms of, um, you know, break-ins and things like that. Then, like, you know, they, that would be getting into something that is probably a pretty pricey thing to get into with security on all the windows and, and all that stuff. I, I wanted to get your opinions on it, to see if it's something that you all felt was necessary. I'm kinda on the fence. I really don't think it's necessary myself.
Maybe what?
What about, um, maybe to help with costs? What if we got a quote for just the downstairs basement area? Or as in the equipment, the trucks and stuff down there? Do you think that'd be beneficial, or if that would be the same?
Security wise?
Security wise?
We could, I could certainly ask them, yeah. I, I don't know what, what.
I was just thinking maybe better cameras. Would that help any?
Better outside cameras? Um, I don't think, I mean.
I think what we have is good enough.
That's some, I mean, that's something I can, I can talk to Mike about. Um, the only real restrictions on the cameras that, that I know of are, some of them are, are panelable while you're, while, while you're using them, but once they, once you zoom in, zoom out, and you stop, they, they default back to a location of where they're set. So, overnight, they're recording, or most of the time they're recording, they're recording in a, a fixed location, you know, so.
Their default position, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so, but I can, those, if those are things that, you know, the other two, the second two items, we can, we can get estimates, and, and I can check with Mike and see what the basement, if that's a, an option. But I think with the fire, the fire system upgrade, I think that's, that's important and something that we have a quote from, and, and should move forward with if, if you're all.
Where is this, where would this be in the budget?
This, oh, I'm sorry, this, yeah, this would be, uh, general fund, um, um.
She's saying, yes, the cap is in the cap.
It's the reserve, I'm sorry, it's the reserve.
Yeah, the capital reserve, okay.
So, so if I, if I could, I'd like to add a couple of things.
Um, so we just wanna bring the fire system up to current standards. Um, there are several components in the fire control box, um, that you can't get anymore. So, essentially, it's, um, it's important to keep that system in working order per the fire marshal. So, basically, what we're trying to do here is put back in place a system that's gonna work for us for years to come. Uh, like I say, with the dated parts, we're on borrowed time, and I've had to jump some circuits in there and do some things, and, um, with it being a safety system, we just want it dependable.
Thank you, Wayne.
That panel too, is that back in this room back here?
Yeah, right up behind the door, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the panels in the.
Room, it's where the HVAC units are and the panels and everything are at. And then, in doing this, we would also divide the entry card system from the fire system as well. That a way, if there's a fault with that, or with any electrical component, right, if there's failure, uh, you know, they're isolated from one another and don't cause, you know, damage to, to each other and cause failure on such an important system.
Well, we have this beautiful new town hall. We certainly wanna protect it.
Questions, comments?
Do you have a question? Um, do the cameras, uh, exterior cameras have the capability of more than just, uh, defaulting to one spot? I mean, are they capable of doing more than what they do? Do you know?
Like a continuous pan kinda thing?
Sure, or just, just more than what they're doing now. I mean, is it a programming thing, or is it a technology thing?
I believe it's a technology thing, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but, but Mike also has, can provide support. He works with, uh, Indigo Vision Equipment, who, Indigo Vision, Steve Farkas, is the one who provided these cameras. Now, not all of them are, some, there are different types of cameras. So, the, uh, I think they're called PTZs, I believe. The front one and the back one are, are different than the two on the sides, I believe, so.
Correct, yeah, that's correct.
I can check, I can check with, with Mike on that as well. As he's looking into maybe the security side of things, then I can ask the questions about the cameras.
Yeah, maybe ask some options to it, not to try to spend more money, but just, uh, I mean, if we're gonna do it, or looking to upgrade that portion of, of this project, then maybe we see what the capabilities are, or if they can be integrated in anything new that we get.
I think it's a good deterrent, you know, just having the cameras, you know.
Right, right.
I mean, seems like a little bit overkill to me to do all these windows and everything, but if there were cameras, you know, pretty, I'm sorry, Wayne, what were you saying?
The only, the only thing, the only thing that I would like to add in regards to the fire protection system, that would be priority one, in my opinion. Uh, we are on borrowed time with that, um, and we wanna make sure that we're up to the standard, um, that the, that the fire marshal requires. So, I would say, um, we should probably move on that fairly quickly, if it's gonna take some time to gather, um, information on the cameras and the security system, just so we, we can continue to operate properly, um, and, and maintain, you know, the requirements of the, the state and the county.
They're separate systems now, not integrated, so it's not like you, you have to decide on one to decide the other.
And Gary, I think I, I, um, would certainly agree with, with Will. Um, the, the back Public Works Bay area, the garage doors and that man door, um, I would be interested if, if, um, there was something else that we could or should do to secure that area. That, that, um, is the most vulnerable area, in, in my opinion, and has the probably most, um, expensive, uh, items down there between vehicles and tools and things like that. And, uh, of course, also lets you up into, into this area. So, um, if there was something that we could do more than a camera, cause a camera is kinda passive after the fact, when we check it out and see who did all this stuff, um, it would be nice if, if there was something we could do if something happened while it was happening.
It's also more secluded back there too.
Absolutely.
Probably the, the likely place where you're gonna try to get in.
Right.
Versus right out here in, in, in the front. Yeah, I'll, I'll check with that, but I think, I agree with Wayne too, that, you know, priority wise, should be the fire system, and then I'm basically putting priority two, three would be the, the door system and security there, so. Um, yeah, so.
So, you'd just get some price.
I'll get, I'll get quotes from Mike on the other two, but, um, I'd like to move forward with this, uh, the fire system upgrade, and with your own concurrence with that.
Need a motion for that?
We can, I mean, it's within my, it's in, it's within my, uh, my amount of more just knowledge and information.
We all agree, right?
Unless somebody had a major.
I, I prefer, I think Michelle would also prefer a motion.
Motion, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we let Gary proceed with.
His job.
Do his job with this. Dana can write that better than that.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, to go ahead with the Spiker's, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-five, forty-seven project to upgrade our fire hall and, or our fire hall, fire system, uh, here at town hall. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, sing if I'm gonna sing aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry.
I'll keep you posted on the other, the other stuff as we move forward. Uh, last thing I have is I noticed, uh, it seems to be kind of a renewed interest or vigor in our recs and parks, which I think is good. I think it should be maybe added, uh, to one of the committees. Uh, maybe either Community Enhancement or, or Public Works. I'm not sure where it would sit best, but I think it should be, uh, part of one of those committees. And, um, you know, Wayne and, and you all met Friday. I couldn't be here. Um, Sharon and Dave and Wayne met Friday. To kinda go over some ideas you all had with, with the parks, and I think that's a good thing to, to have some regular meetings, uh, to, to keep some planning moving, um, and, and obviously just kinda keep things in check as well with, with, you know, how we, how we're pursuing, what we got some projects right now. We got money approved for, through POS for, for Lions Club Park, the retaining wall, and also the, uh, other Main Street Park, the gazebo park. But to get, to get, uh, input on future projects of what we wanna do down the road and things like that. But I think to keep it at the forefront, I think making it, my suggestion would be to make it part of one of those committees so that it's, it can get reported on and, and, and kept, kept up, up on the, on the burner a little bit if we, if we're going that direction, just, just a suggestion.
That's a good idea.
So, so if I may, then I would think, um, it can certainly fall under Community Enhancement, uh, Sharon's committee. I am her backup, and I'm the main for Public Works, uh, with Will as my backup. So, uh, Sharon and I have already met with them. We, we have, uh, agreed to continue our meetings with them and help prioritize the funding that comes in for the parks. So, I think we're more than happy to lead that, and, um, and I'll loop Will in as we do on the, uh, the Public Works part of that.
That was my suggestion, was to put it with Community Enhancement. You okay with that? Alright.
I guess moving forward too, we oughta record the meetings.
So, we have reference points, um, to go back on, and we'll just do like a, a meet, meeting summary at the end of each, each meeting, and, um, like we had talked that about before, so the rest of the council knows, we'll set up the meetings as needed, and then if we decide, you know, we need to go to a quarterly meeting schedule, we can do that as well, um, and, until we get caught up and, and not that we're ever gonna get caught up, cause there's always more work to do, but we can at least set the schedule up that way, and, um, I think it's gonna work out great, and, um, I think it's gonna make, uh, make things go a lot smoother, and having everybody's inputs. Uh, it, it was really great to have the meeting the other day, and it was very productive, and we talked about a lot of things. And, um, I, I look forward to continuing the meetings and the progress.
Idea, Wayne, cause you and I talked about, Wayne contacted me, cause I had had some ideas about one of the par- parks and us, if I could come, and I said, no, cause then there would be three of us. We didn't post this yet, but if we, if we ever did want that, we could post it ahead of time, and it would be fine. But if you had minutes, and, and, and either depending on the discussion, Sharon or Dave brought it, some of the things out, that would give the rest of us a, a chance to chime in and say what we thought, and cause, you know, maybe we all have some ideas, and, you know, we have dormant, our, um, some of the plans that we, we had the university students do several years ago for our whole possible park, you know? And, um, you know, that's economic development too, so that's a hat that I wear, and of course, the mayor. So, I think, I think it's great that you all did that, and I look forward to hearing. And, and I'm gonna be, Sharon and I are gonna be having our committee meeting, and we're, and I'd like to set up a regular schedule too for that, so. I think a quarterly meeting is a good idea for the committees.
Okay. And then just the, uh, upcoming council and work session meetings. We got Wednesday, June first is the council, and then the, uh, Tuesday, June twenty-first is the work session. And I will not, just a reminder, I will not be in attendance for that meeting. Um, I'll be out of the country from the eleventh through the twenty-second. So, I'll, we will need either Mayor or Mayor Neil or Kim to, uh, approve, uh,
Invoices.
Invoices and, and bills and stuff in our absence, so. Just a, just a reminder.
I say payroll too.
Back up on that, so we got, we got that covered. So, mainly need their assistance on approving and moving bills while I'm, while I'm gone, so. We've done that in the past.
We'll take care of it.
Alright, that's all you got?
Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, let you all know that, uh, on Saturday, this past Saturday, um, Planning Commission Chairman, um, Schultz sent, um, set up a tour of the water facility for the Planning Commission, and, um, we had Kevin Shaughnessy from the Planning Commission, um, Emily, who is working on the comprehensive plan with us, and Dana and myself. We met with Ed Pell's Grove, and we spent about two hours, a little over two hours, going to all the, um, different water sites within town. Um, it's extremely, uh, useful and beneficial to, to see that. Um, we really appreciate, uh, Ed's time, Ed Pell's Grove's time to do that with us. Uh, he doesn't rush it at all. We had lots of questions, and we drove from site to site. It was a lot of fun. Um, been, got to go in lots of places where lots of people haven't seen things before, so that was, uh, interesting. Um, we did talk, and, and it would be really nice, um, if we were able to video that. So, I know we've talked about it on our tours, previous tours, but we really need to get that videotaped. Not only so we have Ed's wealth of information captured, but if, if, um, Wayne was involved with that as well, could add in the upgrades that, that he has done, and how that's making our, our water system more efficient. I think it would be a, a wonderful thing to have linked to our, our website, or Facebook, or wherever we need to put that. And, uh,
Think if we get the man in the room to help us with this.
So, so we need to, we need to really give that some thought, and, um, and maybe do that.
I think that's a great idea.
Do you, do you have an internship or?
Summer program, uh, summertime with possibility?
Sure.
We've got some new interns coming on, that's a, that'd be a good.
That would, that would be awesome to do that.
Cause Ed has pictures, I have pictures, and, I mean, you can take pictures anytime, but, you know, Ed, Ed Paul's Grove, former council member that was in charge of Water and Sewer for many years, well, twenty years probably, uh, knows, and then Wayne knows the ins and outs. Between those two, they know the ins and outs of all of our Water and Sewer.
Definitely having a narrator, they've got a script, and then we can shoot those things that we don't already have pictures for. Absolutely.
That'd be great. It'll probably be ad lib, but.
Yeah.
I think we just do it, just do it, like, uh, formalize it a little bit, but what they did last week, just a tour, and just have a narrator explaining it. I mean, I think people just have, for a small town, we have quite an extensive water system.
Well, a lot of people think all they have to do is turn the tap on and flush. That's it.
That's the end. That's the easy part.
And the, and the real amazing thing, I mean, I, I think I've been out there three times so far, and, and every time you go out there, it's something new that Wayne and the crew have been doing out there, and it, it changes, and, and I'm sure we'll see that video, and then two years from then, be like, oh, Wayne did that, Wayne did that. The crew did everything, so it'll be great to see that time lapse.
This is just kind of a pie in the sky thing, Richard, but do you ever have, do you ever have, have you ever had these, anybody who could do a drone video too?
So, um, we have one, uh, staffer who's piloted, has their license. Um, and then, um, we may be able to talk to some other, uh, Chris Swam in the county possibly, if he's out doing stuff. We could give them a list.
Yeah, yeah, just, just for some folks to sort of get the scope of it, you know? Cause it starts, what, how many miles outside of town?
Three and a half.
Three and a half as the drone would fly.
Better to get the perspective of thirty-one and where it is, and you come down, you know, cause I remember when we did it a few years ago, I was like, oh my goodness, you know, so. Maybe we can just talk about that, but that would be cool.
Google Maps is also another possibility, but there, there are a couple ways of doing that, and pie in the sky was that a pun intended?
So, but you'd say, no, it's not a pie in the sky, we can do that.
And just to let you know, my son is a licensed.
Oh, okay, well, there you go. Alright, Mr. Mayor. To-do list, right?
Hmm?
Well done. Put it on the to-do list, ask him if he'd be willing to help us, I guess.
I'm sure he would.
Start with, that would be great.
That'd be great for him.
Yes, it would.
That was all I had.
That's all, okay. Anybody else? Council, Dana? Alright, Richard, thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Richard, much appreciated.
Staff and council, thank you. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Oh, we have a motion, second for adjournment. All those in favor, sing if I'm gonna sing aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Record.